Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's School Board Committee of the whole meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have met compliance with all official notifications. Roll call, please.
Nicholson.
I'm here.
Sarah Schuber-McConne.
Here.
Shelley Mowen.
Here.
Catherine Gomond.
Here.
Nick Schumacher here. President Steve Olson.
Here.
Virtual Laura Gapsky.
You don't see her yet?
Okay.
Sure.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment signup sheet by entrance prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes of length. Action taken at today's meeting will be forwarded for recommendations for final approval at the next regular school board meeting on Monday, October 13th, 2025. First up would be comments by members of the public, and we do not have any of those. Next is our report from our superintendent. Just kidding, we knew she wasn't going to be here. Dr. Flay got delayed, unfortunately. Following informational items will be presented to the board next Monday at our regular board meeting. Mr. Kalin, Principal at Bryant Elementary, will provide his update. And our new high school representatives, Brendan Farrell and Veronica Osara-Walls. How do I say that? Heidi? Okay, we're gonna have to get the pronunciation right, because, all right, let me know.
We'll all know soon.
We can ask her next week.
We can ask. Please state your name. Raise your right hand.
Full name.
Discussion item, though, there's nothing listed. I do want to add two things. One is it is National Officials' Recognition Week, so we'd like to send them a thank you to all the people that are officiating all of our fall sports. It is the national organization that runs their weekly appreciation week. Some of the schools in the area run a fall, one a winter, and a spring and stuff, but I know that without them, and you know this, we just can't operate the games for the kids and stuff. We do know that there's always a lot of officials in the stands and not necessarily enough on the courts or the fields and stuff, so if you're interested in being an official, contact Ella, contact myself, contact Ray Cozy. We'd love to have you join us instead of telling us what we should be doing. Next, I'm very, probably getting in trouble for that, right? Oh, wow. Next, I'd like to acknowledge that it is Wisconsin School Board Week. I'd like to thank our school board members here today for your work, your dedication to the school district, public school education especially, and always have our discussions that we are always keeping in mind the best thing to do is always do things for our students. We have wonderful programs in this district, and it's been because of school boards in this city and this community that we are as successful as we are. So to my current members, thank you, and to all former school board members, we thank you. The action item for Amy would have been WIA Winter Support and Cooperation Agreements. Administration recommends approval of the following athletic cooperatives. Man, let's get the tongue going. Gymnastics, girls hockey, boys swim and dive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the administration's recommendation of athletic cooperatives for gymnastics, girls hockey, boys swim and dive. Are there any comments, questions? Ella, anything to add?
These are just ones that have been longstanding. Everything, the hockey and swim, gymnastics is every year.
Sure. Ella, when we're looking at these, and just, I know the answer to the question, but just for the general knowledge of everybody and anybody that's listening, and if they have questions really about cooperative agreements, they can contact you on this, but when we look at when we're going to perhaps have a cooperative with other school, there's a whole process that the WIA requires and stuff, but what's one of the most important things for us when we look at, you know, are we going to really seek out a cooperative, or do we have enough students?
The, I would say the WIA is starting to crack down to try to not have as many co-ops. You see it especially in gymnastics and girls hockey, massive formations of co-ops. Team that we lost the state championship to in girls hockey a few years ago, I think the number of students in their cooperative was like close to 20,000 when you put all of their schools together, and just high school population. It might have been more. For ours, it's us and Northwestern, which gets close to 2,000, right? So there's very few schools that are not co-op in gymnastics and hockey, and it's essentially providing less opportunity for people because, you know, there's different things, right? So the WIA is getting more strict on what we're doing and how to get cooperatives. The process since I've been here and started, it used to be one sheet that I bring to you guys. Now it's a whole form that I have to fill out. Bryant, Northwestern needs to fill out. We have to why we're doing it, what's going on. So I would say they're trying to get away from those in the sense of they're getting to be power teams, if you will. The big thing, I had a meeting in September, an area meeting, that the point of co-ops is for the whole school to be able to host the program. So if we in Superior think we want to have a program, but we're getting very low on numbers, that's when we would reach out for a co-op. It's not our job to have others come to us and say, hey, we have a couple of kids that really want to play. Can we co-op with you? That's how they get bigger and bigger and bigger. I was not part of when these started. I would say I assume that when girls hockey started, we wanted, it was probably when the WIA made the change from girls not being able to play the boys sport anymore. So we said, well, we've got great girls hockey, we've got great hockey in the city. So that's when they reached out to Northwestern to get that co-op going. That'd be my assumption. Probably the same thing for gymnastics, to get enough kind of up and off the road. So I think that in itself of like, the point of a co-op is that the whole school is able to have enough to provide the sport, not to help out and get more kids from different areas. As we move into other things that have been asked, if we co-op with a team, then we cannot cut in a program, which we obviously, we try as hard as we can not to cut in our programs, but there's certain situations, safety, playing time, all this kind of stuff, that if we have too many students, that can be almost as hard as not having enough students when you're trying to manage.
So when you say that, isn't that part of the agreement, though, between the two schools, if I remember those forms correctly? The two schools would have to agree not to cut. I guess I'd have to look a little bit more. I don't recall it when I was the A.D., and perhaps it's changed, but the cutting process was never part of it. Only if the two schools agreed that we're getting X amount of kids from Northwestern, and now we have a process where we may have to cut students.
It's my understanding, when I read the senior high handbook from the WIA, that cuts are not, if you're co-opping, means that you have not enough kids, so you cannot get to cut. So if you're in a situation where you need to cut, then we would have to say, oh, sorry, Northwestern, we have enough kids, we can't have you anymore. So that's my understanding the way I read it. I can look at that again, but I'm pretty sure in this past year and a half, when we've gotten more requests, that's been something that I've read, is it does say you cannot cut if you have a cooperation.
And then the other thing is, is that any student who would want to be part of our athletic programming, and more so our educational program, which offers athletics and other activities, that you'd have the option to open and enroll in the school.
Correct, if you live in Wisconsin.
Correct, living in Wisconsin, and attending a public school, or you can be a homeschool student as well. Any other discussion?
If we do not co-op, do we not have enough students to form a team for these three organizations?
Um, not necessarily. We have not done a dive into looking at whether we should stop these co-ops or not. So I, to be completely honest, haven't searched it a ton. Off the top of my head, it would be borderline, I think, for at least two of the three. With the co-op in girls hockey, we've been able to have a JV program. That's been only three years, I think, four years. So that started my second year here, we were able to have enough for that. So depending on what we think is enough, right? Like, I think having a JV program is very important for all our levels if we can. Gymnastics and boys swim, I think it would be, gymnastics would be a question mark, boys swim, I think would probably be okay. But, and I think when some of these, maybe the boys swim, maybe gymnastics, when it started, it could have been, hey, we got a couple of kids out here that have swam with the Whalers since they were five. Can't they come and join? And the answer would be like, sure, I mean, why not? Makes sense. And I do think it makes sense in a lot of ways, too, but I think it just looks a lot different than when these three were started. And for what reason, I don't really know that, too.
What other sports do we co-op with, or for?
This is it.
Just the three?
Any other discussion or questions? Ringed on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consideration of the overnight field trip requested by Pete Conley from Superior High School for Chicago, Illinois, from February 25 to March 1, 2026, for an AP Biology Evolution Field Trip.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the field trip request by Pete Conley for Superior High School, February 25 to March 1, 2026, for AP Biology Evolution Field Trip. Any further discussion?
What is the requirement for students versus chaperone numbers? We're talking four chaperones for 65 children.
Great question for a principal.
You're up, Kate.
Sorry. You laughed great.
No, I know that Amy has that number, what we've recommended.
Yeah, I would assume that, and I would also, yeah, I can give an opinion.
Thank you.
For an AP field trip would be, you know, a class size number. Like, it doesn't concern me in regards to our class size numbers for our AP courses and the content there, but...
So does a four include Pete?
Yes. There's one crossed off on the sheet, but there's three plus.
Discussion, of course, it is a balance. Every time our teachers leave the building to take a smaller group of students, we have to pay the cost of subs. So we're balancing the subs we need to be in-house to keep teaching the other courses. So I think it's kind of a balance. That was a part of the discussion, but I've seen part of some of this, so.
I guess that's my only concern. Leaving Wednesday, coming back Sunday, you're talking hotel rooms, you're talking public spaces. I mean, I know we're talking an AP class, so that's kind of hopefully a different discussion than if it was not, but just seems like a lot of students for adults to juggle.
Do you know if this would be their plan for sure this year? However, it has always been their plan in the past. This is a really, like, small group kind of facilitated field trip, because they don't travel to museums and the places that they're going, like, as a group of 50 or 60, which is actually harder, even if you have 10 chaperones, chaperones, to kind of manage a large group like that, especially if they're walking, speed crossing, and all of that. So I'm assuming one thing that helps is that they do a lot in smaller groups. So then each chaperone has like a smaller amount of people.
And then are there other people there facilitating the learning?
At each of the spots that they go to, at the museums.
Yeah, I'm looking now.
And aquariums, the places they go.
If you could reach out to Mr. Conley, make sure he's here at next week's meeting, and Amy again would have pretty much the numbers that we expect, you know, number of students per chaperone. You know, the one that's crossed out, Kushman, she no longer teaches in the, we'd have to tell Pete to.
But I'm just thinking.
Process here a little bit.
When I was at the museum, I mean, we knew when students were coming, and so there's probably staff being prepared for students to come, too. So their staff at those sites would also provide care.
Yeah.
What do we do here? Well, we can approve it to move to next Monday's meeting for final approval, and then in the meantime, I'll get ahold of Amy tomorrow, or Anne.
I'll simply acknowledge it. Thanks.
Great.
Thanks, Ken.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion? Ringed on all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Our board committee reports teaching and learning.
Are we taking these individually, or all as one?
Do you want to teach them?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Administration recommends the addition of new courses at the Superior High School. Algebra II, Mathematical Modeling, Mathematical Modeling, new course requirement, Data Science, new course request, AP Precalculus, new course request, all one credit. Crystal.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second to approve.
Now we're in discussion?
Now we're in discussion.
Okay, well, we are very excited about this action item, but I wanted to put a little context and background out for you, especially maybe for our newer members, where this is the first time you're approving new courses, before I turn things over to our teachers and principal from the high school who will be talking about this. So just so you are aware, again, especially if you're newer to the board, is in policy that anytime we bring forward and start a new credit-bearing class at our high school, that the board approve it. So you are approving, or we're asking for approval tonight, for three new courses that would be added into the curriculum, starting in the fall of 2026 for our high schoolers. The reason that we do this so far in advance is this process needs to happen before these courses are added to the high school course catalog, before conversations and work at the middle school and the high school happen with the kids about what courses they want to take, and then course registration happens. Typically, in the past, I have come in December if we have any new courses, but this year, and I think Amy might have mentioned this at a previous meeting, the timeline for the process is getting moved up, so course registration can happen in December. So a lot needs to happen to get ready for that. We're moving through a timeline that is a little more common for high schools our size, so high school administration has time to really plan well for staffing. So the timeline's bumped up this year for that reason. So that's a little bit of a, this action item is in front of you. The other thing that I'd like to say before I turn things over to the crew is that you probably are familiar with the fact that in our new strategic plan, we have both at the elementary level and the secondary level named some math things, because we know that math is an area that we need to address some issues with. Long before the strategic plan work started, our high school and middle school math teachers were already doing professional development for a couple of years, as they were looking at the data themselves, saying, wow, we've got some things we need to hunker down and work on, and look at our data, and think about instruction. In addition to that, as you may know, during COVID, research clearly has indicated now that math achievement of students took a much bigger hit, and students regressed much more than in the area of the LA. So while we have a lot of work to do in growth, and we're working hard on that, we are not alone. On, with that, the research across the country and the world is saying math was an area where if students were getting that direct instruction on a day-to-day basis, that was really challenging and hard for the math development. Something else that happened in the last couple of years, as we've been kind of trying to work our way back from some of the COVID regression, is that a conversation started across the United States about the purpose of the Algebra II class at the high school level. So Algebra II, and we'll show you a visual in a little bit, is traditionally a third-year math class, and is required to get into a four-year college. When you look at the skills, knowledge, skills, and dispositions that are taught in an Algebra II class, some questions started coming up in many districts and states across our country about, is that what all kids need in order to meet their goals and be successful beyond high school? So we are the 27th state in the country that started that conversation at the state level, and started working with districts to make some changes, which is why we're in front of you today. We are one of the districts in Wisconsin that is ready to make some changes in the math pathways that we offer the students at our high school. Okay, I think with that, I've kind of like set the stage. I do want to introduce to Bruce Bauer and Lindsay Runkie, they're our instructional coaches at the middle school and high school. They both have a teaching background in math, which is obviously a huge asset when we are working with our math teachers to provide support. You probably know Jake Smith, he is the math department chair. He is a critical person in this process, because his signature, at least his E-signature, had to allow me to say that as leader of that department, that, you know, he's in support of these changes along with the department. And then I'll let the rest of the crew introduce themselves when they come up. So I'm going to turn things over to one of our assistant principals and to our teachers. Well, no. Anne, could you go to the slides?
Yep.
Perfect. And they are going to share some information with you, and then I can help answer questions at the end.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for having us. My name's Matt Emerson, one of the assistant principals at the high school. I've got the privilege of working with our math department this year. You might be wondering, like, why are we looking at new pathways? The pathway we have right now is totally fine. To me, there are two reasons that we really need to look into this new pathway. And the first one is that, as you know, our state has selected the ACT as our benchmark assessment for all high school students. They take that test their junior year of high school. Right now, about a sixth of our students come into high school needing foundations of algebra, which means that they won't get to Algebra II until their senior year of high school. So they won't even have the option to get through all of that math learning in time for the ACT. So they don't have really a fighting chance to know everything that they could know by the end of high school. The second issue to me, and maybe the more important issue, is that the current pathway we have really just sets our students up for college after high school. And we know that that's not every student's path, and we know that that's not required to be a successful member of society. If we truly do want to provide a superior learning experience and empower every student for life, we need to be sure that we are providing all of the options for them that are going to make sure that they can be successful with any path they choose. So I'm going to turn things over to Crystal and Waylon, and they'll explain a little bit more about the pathways, but we just wanted to kind of point those two things out, because they are two of the bigger reasons why we're looking into this.
Hi, everybody. I'm Crystal Lawton. I teach Algebra II, Statistics, and Precalculus at the high school. So this is kind of my wheelhouse here. One of the big things we did, so kind of backing up a little bit, when Crystal talked about how there's other states that are doing this, we went to Ashland, we did some CISA learning last year, modernizing out here, too, I think is what it was called. So we were gabbling and things, and one of the things that we learned is that the workforce is saying that we, our students need more statistics, more data science, more quantitative reasoning. And there are some students that still need that calculus path, but that's a pretty small number now. And so what we did was our precalculus course pathways, we kept that in mind, and making sure that, that first bullet, students have meaningful pathways to get them through, not necessarily that traditional Algebra II through calculus sequence, but getting them, still to get the Algebra II done, but in a little bit more, what's called mathematical modeling, so more problem-solving, more hands-on approach. We want to have more students take a fourth year of math. Right now, we have a lot of students that take the required three years, and then they're done. And so we're hoping to have more students take four years of math with these changes. And then the last step is, if you look on the right, there are future goals that we want students to think about, and then align their pathways based on those goals. So the top right, Algebra II and AP Precalculus, that's kind of the pathway that is the Algebra II through calculus pathway, whereas the Algebra II Mathematical Modeling can be for various careers, computer science, we have data science, and then statistics also.
All right. I'm Waylon. I teach math at the high school, got precal, and then calculus, A and B, C. So this is basically the work we did when we were down at the CISA last year. The first three bullet points involved the work we did last year. We went through, and we started all looking at the ACT, and like, so they have four levels, and so we looked at like level three, like what proficiency, like, and we went through every single standard on the ACT proficiency table. We kind of broke those down. And then the next thing is, we did is we aligned those then to the Wisconsin State Standards. And so then we really bent to all of those standards to look at proficiency, and figured out where exactly would they fit into those coursework. A lot of them are labeled year two, which means they should have in the first two years of high school. So then we looked at what was left, and what really needed to be covered in a third-year course. And then once we kind of did that, that's what we built those pathways on, with the idea of making sure that every student, no matter what pathway they took, were going to be ensured that they were hitting all of the essential stuff, be prepared for the ACT, and to be successful, but also like, to be able to align themselves with what their future goals were. And then so this, after we built those pathways, that bullet point four, that's what we did this summer, is where we actually then sat down, kind of like, like, I think we had four or five iterations of what those pathways would look like, dialed that in, and then put together all of the coursework and the descriptions for those three classes.
Okay, so this is draft 15.
3.5 on six.
We looked at this many, many times. But as you see, like, on the left-hand side is the classes and kind of stuff that they would take. But on the far right is what you saw on that previous slide. Students really, like, we're going to work with counselors, and we're going to work with our math teachers to make sure that students are picking classes that are in their future goals, that are aligned with their future goals. And so our new courses, so like, year one Algebra, one student goes to year two Geometry, and then that's where they have the choice of going into Algebra II or Algebra II Mathematical Modeling. And then we push them to say, okay, what are you looking at for your future careers, or what are you interested in? And then that will help them decide, are they an Algebra II pathway, which is the top one under year three, or are they Algebra II Mathematical Modeling? The bottom pathway is for students that come into us taking Geometry, and then they would take the Algebra II and AP Calculus. They can kind of veer a little bit if their path changes, but typically those kids coming in would stay on that path. But AP Precalculus is, we have calculus, or precalculus this year, but not the AP that started in, what was it, 2023, I think, was the first school year. So we don't have it yet, but it has become a creative thing. And so the yellow is just our new courses. So Algebra II Mathematical Modeling, AP Calculus, and then that science class as well. Good job. Okay.
And then this is just all of the resources we put together for sharing all with the students and the family. You can see on the one side. And for the staff, those are slides that teachers will be using with our Geometry students when they're looking at their pathways and figuring out what classes they want to choose. So that's for the staff. And then me put together this video for everybody.
Can you play the video?
Yep. Yep.
Thank you.
Not that easy, is it Heidi?
And David Coy, of course, is to thank for all of the beautiful video work. Okay, do you have any questions for us? A few other things I could share kind of about our next steps, but.
So I'm sure this is still going on between the middle school and the high school that we're identifying where students should be coming in when they take their first high school course. We've been monitoring them through their math all the way through. Happens to that student that doesn't fit into this model and it goes to me right at the beginning, when that student that's identified that, oh my gosh, this student isn't, isn't even ready for foundations of algebra yet. What, what are we doing for that student?
Heidi, do you want to say anything before?
I think it depends if the student is in the special education services. There's obviously an IP team that discusses what it would look like for them in their coursework. Otherwise, it goes back to the, to the data that they're presenting from their eighth grade scores, the team discusses, and then we collaborate with, you know, their current math teacher, the eighth grade counselor, the ninth grade counselor, the ninth grade math team to determine really what is the right placement for that individual kiddo based on their circumstances.
No, I know the answer.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, and Steve, one of the things that is going to, actually a dream we've had for a long time, we were part of this back in the day, that is going to be able to come alive as part of this, is when students take Algebra I, if it's been identified that they need some support to be successful in that class, they're going to take that intervention and support alongside Algebra I so they have the support that they need.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's, that's a really exciting part of this, that's going to be able to happen.
And as we're looking at adding these stuff, and what's the requirement for numbers? How many students are we looking at that we must have in the class to, to hold the class? And then what are we looking at in future years?
I will say the one part that we will continue to prioritize is that we will likely never have a really large number of students taking AP Calc AB and AP Calc BC. But it is absolutely critical for a high school our size or any high school in Wisconsin to prepare those kids that are going into those specific fields and are headed to a four-year college and possibly grad school after that, that even if it's a smaller number of kids, we still need to offer those two courses. So that is something that we know we're going to continue to prioritize. I think as the high school looks at staffing models and registration numbers, you know, some decisions might need to get made. We don't know yet how popular, for example, the data science class will be, you know, or the AP Precalc class, so those.
And sometimes those take a little bit of time to get off the ground. It might need to run it a little, a little lean in the first go-through so students have the opportunity for the experience. And I think, you know, everybody's invested a lot of time in, in the success of this. So with your approval as we move forward, I think the, the work with students and families will become really important and then we'll monitor that as we go through the registration process this December.
Where does the financial literacy state requirement fit into all of those stuff?
So it's kind of really quite separate from this, but our, the students for the new personal financial literacy class that's required, starting with the class of 2028, they will take that as a senior and it will, it's not really going to be in one department, you know, kind of like they don't, it isn't owned by one. However, there are many skills that will be taught in that that are a little bit already taught in the business department and also in the econ class. So it'll kind of be a hybrid of some of those things. In two years, our seniors will take that course for half of a year. So it'll be, need to be part of the picture when kids think about their four-year plan, but it won't count as a math credit.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, actually the state statute doesn't allow it to be counted for a math credit.
So for the top two pathways in year four, those are like the same. So how are you guiding students into what they're doing in year four?
Well, a lot of the conversation is going to be with counselors and families and kids about truly what their goals are for after high school and maybe what their strengths and interests are. We, math is an area that's a little bit different than the elective areas or even sometimes the English area where we don't always have a lot of conversations with kids about what do you think is fun about math? And, you know, what really interests you within math classes? But that conversation is going to come more alive and need to happen more as part of this process to help them decide which of those classes might be more interesting to them.
And it will also be very applicable because scheduling in year three will happen in December of their junior year and a lot of those students are actually identifying what's going to happen next. Or when we have those conversations in ninth and 10th grade, it's still a little bit interesting. But in December, January of their junior year, they're like, oh, I actually see myself going to the school or to go into this field. So when the counselors meet with the juniors, it's a much more in-depth, linked conversation on the next steps.
And I do, too, the end of Algebra II Mathematical Modeling has a statistics unit, hoping that kids will be like, gee, I can do that. And so that leads into hopefully our statistics.
Yeah, that, that takes away the stigma, you know, oh my God, statistics.
So if I'm a sophomore and I'm in geometry and I have no idea what I want to do after high school, what's, what's the differences between the current class and the new class? Can you give like a rough, kind of, I don't know, kind of explanation as what the differences are?
The biggest difference is with the math modeling, like we kind of struggle with wording like including that Algebra II because of the separation of those two classes and the ability to understand them. The modeling is really digging into the modeling process of mathematics. But the reason you did leaning toward leaving the Algebra II is because it's needed for college applications, like they're looking for Algebra II. So that's why it's kind of, but really in that modeling, it's a lot more hands-on, looking at math models and determining, you know, what we can interpret from them. Whereas the Algebra II is more computational, like it's kind of more like rooted into how do we actually do the algebraic manipulations of these structures and building up for that precalculus pathway.
So when you say models, are you talking like real-life, everyday examples kinds of situations with math? Or I guess I don't know what a model would be.
Question. I think, can I just pop in?
The math teacher.
She's like, I remember she'd be excited about math every day. It might be physical manipulation of things, but it also is like a visual representation of things. So we're drawing, we're, we're diagramming, we're breaking things apart, we're writing about it, we're, we're, there's more, more of the process than it is like the computation. Like you do this, then you do this, then you do this. It's more conceptual for kids, especially where you like, this is what you do, just do it. That works for some kids and it doesn't work for a lot of people. So I think that's the, the real draw to having more of a hands-on slash modeling approach.
And then also in modeling, there's sort of like in a true math modeling process, there's like a six-step process to it. So we're going to start incorporating some of those processes then where you like are actually like, you know, taking some big world questions and then like forming questions around them. And, and then like, how are we going to collect the data to try to answer the questions we are and then refining our models? So that's going to be hopefully built into the, what we're doing in that as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions?
Bruce, hey, you put you on the spot.
If you sound like whispering, it's 100.
I think it's a, you know, any, anything we can do to improve the math skill of our students, it, it goes all the way back to when they start K through 12. This certainly seems like you're building on more real-world experiences, giving kids more, more of an understanding of where they really fit in with math instead of that old hard act of you will take Algebra I, Algebra II, Geometry and you, you guys have been here long enough, you know that old model and stuff. So I, I think it's a great idea. I think you've done a wonderful job putting this together and hopefully we, we can support you in moving this forward.
I'm excited to see data science as well as someone who's working with people that are, like industry is coming to us and saying, can you put stuff together for our employees around data science? And one of the things in particular is talking about what they're seeing. So as you think about data science, not just looking at the data, analyzing the data, but how do I communicate what that means to like a layperson? So that's just something that we're hearing now from employers of people aren't coming ready to do data science. So it's great to see.
Yeah, and we, I think I've mentioned this at times throughout the last school year when I've mentioned math. We've watched other districts in the state as they're in, you know, you know, year two or three of doing some of this and listening to some of their advice and, you know, what they're excited about and what they're seeing in their students and the data science pieces definitely come up.
I would just like to say one thing because I don't think we acknowledge it enough. And when you think about all the work that's happened here, I think Crystal, her vision of like how to back this train up a really long ways, not just like next month what needs to happen, but the work that went in years previous to now to make sure that we're moving along learning as a team, I think needs to be recognized. So thank you for all that you've done to create a progress system for our math department to be a part of it and our high school in general, counselors, admin, the whole team. And then now with all of you, so thank you for your vision and work.
Okay.
I like it.
That's it. So you can print interaction items.
And the chair didn't have, the chair didn't have to stand up and say anything.
No. I have to give a speech if you would do it. Your turn, your turn.
It's been in the scoping sequence.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, although just in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion curious. All right, no discussion items. We do have an informational item, Dina Hague and Director of Student Services, Progress Monitoring Update. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Remember the last two months, so excited about math. Serious, serious, so exciting. Okay, I wanted to take an opportunity to update you guys on a new progress monitoring system that we've been working on this year, specific to special education, students that receive special education services. I think Amy gave you kind of a written rundown of it in your update last month, so hopefully you have a little context, but I'll try to give you some more. So basically, federal special education law requires that we monitor and report progress on IEP goals to parents. And the law is very specific about when we're doing that reporting and how. So basically what that means is every time a student gets a typical report card, any student gets a report card, we usually give a progress report of the IEP goal at the same time. So that's very specifically laid out for us. Again, it's still outlined in law that we monitor the progress along the way, but it's not super specific about how to do that, when to do that. So, but we also know that if we don't monitor the progress along the way, we could be going a whole quarter or a semester without really knowing if our students are progressing with their IEP goals or not. And we, we only have so much time. And so unfortunately, what happens in our school systems is, you know, before a student is recognized as needing special education services, in general education, we do a lot of teaching and monitoring, teaching and monitoring, teaching and monitoring and adjusting along the way. And then when special education services start, that kind of drops off a little bit. So, and that's just how systems work, all the systems that I've ever worked in have done that. So the importance of making it more regularly monitoring how they're doing on their IEP goals, that we can make any instructional adjustments sooner than later and really keep an eye on that. Because to contribute to the bigger picture in the strategic plan of the district, we have to raise the achievement levels, especially of those, you know, our students that are receiving special education services. So all that to say, back in August, August 21st, we, we always have like a welcome back special ed day for all of our special ed staff. And so I rolled this out on that day to staff and I let them know that the expectation starting this year, with lots of support involved as well, would be to make sure they're collecting a data point on that IEP goal or goals weekly. And then every two weeks, they would need to record the data point in a system of some sort. We have a variety of systems that we use in our district and so I gave them the choice of you can put it in any system that you're currently using and are comfortable with or whatever works for you. But the point being, you're taking the regular data points and then your system is creating a graph so you can have a visual of the progress of whether it's going up or down for parents for all the reasons, you know, for instructional adjustment, most importantly. So that's been going very well. You know, at first it was a little nerve-wracking to think of, you know, just doing some extra tasks. But ultimately, when getting through this initial change, other teachers, you know, from other systems have recognized that, you know, it's very valuable to be able to see this progress, actually see it, not just think about it in our heads on behalf of those kids. So I'm very proud of all of the principals, all of the staff that have been working the last month to get set up for this. And people have reached out to me and our special education coach, Chrissy Ronteddy, for any help that they need. Like we've had everything from, I have no idea what to do, to, oh, I used to do this in a previous job or something and I, I know exactly what to do and everything in between. So we're in the phase of still just kind of getting into the, into the routine and then continuing to monitor and support along the way. And, and then next it's going to be, okay, what are you seeing? What are you noticing? How is this affecting your day-to-day? How is this affecting the achievement of the kids? So I think that's all I wanted to say about that, but I will answer any questions you have.
So the involvement of the case managers then?
It's the IEP manager's, you know, job as, as the manager of that IEP to make sure there's a system set up to collect data on each of those goals. And students could have one IEP goal, they could have five IEP goals. Most kids have one, two, three, somewhere in there. Yep. And then if there's a team surrounding the achievement of that goal, we've really been colla, working on collaborative IEP goals versus standalone goals where this person's working on this and this instead, what's the overarching goal that we all can work on together? And so then the data points get contributed from a variety of team members, which is very helpful as well. So that we started working on that last year too.
So handling those cases comes with a lot of paperwork always. So is this increasing their paperwork load, decreasing, helping? So is this increasing their paperwork load, decreasing, helping manage it a little bit better?
It's, it's increasing it a little bit by, you know, the the physical act of putting the data into a system is not something that they've done before. They've been hopefully taking the data all upon a paper pencil. But it's putting it into a way where they can more closely monitor. And we do have situations where there hasn't been any monitoring of that data in between reporting. So it's kind of a, yes, it's a little more, but in the end, I think it will pay off. So.
Are they using EduClimber then, most of them? Is that the place to use it?
Yeah, so back to the systems of choice. We have several of our schools that are using EduClimber to monitor progress for students before they are determined to need special education. So we have, you know, all that happening. So some have just naturally, the buildings have morphed into doing it all in EduClimber because that's what they do. But our IEP system, Spentforms, also has a tool in there where you can put the data points in each week and it will create a graph. So I've taught the staff how to use that as well. So, and some, you know, continue in FastBridge because we're doing certain testing in FastBridge. But I've even given, given them the option to just simply put it in Excel. Excel will create a graph as well, you know, if all else fails.
So if you're talking about an elementary student going to the middle school or middle school to high school, if they're using different programs, is that going to cause a problem going forward?
Well, like other things in our district, not all of our systems talk to each other. So it is going to be really important that we have a plan to make sure that information gets from one, you know, one school to the next within the files, yes. Ideally, it would all be happening in one system, but unfortunately, it's not. If we keep going, we'll learn more and more and hopefully can figure that piece out easier.
And I would assume that we're still having conversations then in the spring of the year to follow a little bit along that question. Matt, I think, are you still in, involved with the special education? So the conversations with perhaps the teacher that, or the case manager at the high school is having conversations with the middle school and perhaps that team and are identifying a team in need at the high school then for that, that student? Is that accurate yet?
It is, yeah. I see this really benefiting students and staff in a lot of ways. And we do a great job explaining why. To answer Sarah's, your question about, is it working out? It might be a little bit on the front end, but it's gonna, it's gonna cause like more detailed progress reports. And when we have those more detailed progress reports, we're going to be able to place students in the correct classes far, faster, and more actively. So I think, yeah, it might be a little bit more work, but it's something that is really going to benefit the kids in a lot of them.
And because it's a requirement, we don't want to end up getting red flagged on these when, when we have our audit every year.
Right. And and to add to, I just thought of something else to add to Matt's point, you know, when, as a former IEP manager myself, if I didn't have the data I needed to be able to do my progress report or my report card at time, if I didn't have the data, that's a heck of a lot harder than having the data right in front of me and just putting it into the report. So I think, like I said, initially, it feels like, but I think the payoff is is much better. Yeah.
And we're still giving the opportunity if they need time to do paperwork, the extra days and things?
Yep, they can take a day, a quarter, our trimester, and then we're continuing at the pizza and paperwork nights as well, so.
Are they still on just four hour work so they have the?
Okay, so they have a hundred cent per song, you're like, maybe you try it.
At the secondary level, yeah.
Okay.
But no duty, no.
No duty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not the same on the elementary level.
Right.
As a former elementary special ed teacher, that's a challenge.
Yeah, my knowledge goes high school, should you remember?
Yeah. Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. That's a very lengthy report.
You're welcome.
You did well, young man.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Budget and Insurance Committee to report.
Then I have one action item, which is gifts, grants, and bequests. Administration recommends approval of to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in September 2025.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Look at, look at this.
I know. It's great.
Second month of of school.
That's really great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And discussion items, we have a few. I have to put my glasses back on. Third Friday enrollment.
Give us the good news, Dave. Go ahead.
Remember your goal. Remember the goal.
All right, so this was September 19th was our third Friday count. First, I do have to say, one of my kids is going to be really mad. It was at this meeting. Is that data science stuff? September 19th was our third Friday count. That is one of the most important days we have at a school district. Constantly go and do a head count of all of our kids. Casey Smith kind of leads that group and does it, and all our secretaries kind of gather all that. It's an ongoing process. It's actually not due the numbers to DPI until last Friday. So last Friday is when I got the official numbers. I went down and talked to Casey and said, give me, give me the good news, and she told me to leave. And then she told me what really happened and it was like a, a bunch to the gut. So our numbers this year, the final head count was 3,732 students, compared to 3,897 students last year. That number was way, was lower than what I was anticipating. So after the shock kind of wore off, I said, all right, Casey, we got to figure out what's, what is the big thing? And it turns out, if you look at that second, second row, total 4K kids, there was 79 less kids compared to last year. What happened was, at the end of last year, there was some weird budget stuff on the state side that dealt directly with Head Start. We were anticipating, this is the beginning, we, we were going to lose some kids. We were anticipating that they were going to get a bunch of third grade or three year olds and run their 3K system. We kind of inherit these 4Ks. I was a little nervous that we're going to have a spike, actually, and cause us to actually bring in teachers. What happens with this Head Start agreement is they teach the kids, they run the whole group and the whole thing. We don't have to pay for anything. The state gives us the money because we can serve our kids and we give a portion of the money the state gives us. We give that to Head Start. Because of that budget shift, Head Start said, we're just going to take the money now, deal directly with the state. They have different rules than what, what we have to go by. They ended up just keeping 4Ks. In the end, I think the reason they keep the 4Ks is they didn't have to recruit new kids. They just had their 3Ks become 4Ks and there we go. It really hurt us. So in essence, we lost those 77 kids or 79 kids, but we don't get to reduce anything. We just lose the kids. We don't get to reduce teachers because we have teachers teaching them anyways. So it's, it's a double whammy for us when it hits us. My guess is I assume that we'll get more kids next year because they'll have to go, and they'll probably recruit 3Ks, no one that can keep it for two years, which means we're going to get, a lot of the 3K kids that are three years old couldn't get into 3K because all the spots were filled with 4K students. So we're going to get those kids home next year. The hard part is with, we can't compete against Head Start. It's all day, it's free, they feed them the whole, the whole thing. We're 4K, our 4K is half a day, whose wrap care provided afterwards, but that costs money. So it's just something we can't compete with unless the state changes something, makes 4K all day. All day, day and rest of the day.
So is there a way to identify who those kids are to see if they are still at Head Start? Do we have that capability or is it, we can do that?
So we have, because we know how to have a partnership with 34K Head Start and not share their class lists with those anymore, and so they protect those. However, many of the students have already enrolled in 4K because we started our enrollment in February before they had pulled out. So we do know that a majority of them are still in attendance. You know, obviously Head Start has kids coming in and out throughout their program, throughout the year, just their movement, their transient inlays. However, we're expecting a majority of them to come into the schools next year.
So theory of what that means is we, we should stay pretty flat. What's kind of, my hope is that we flatten out as far as our decline in enrollment. I mean, I should, we're going to continue with declining enrollment, but I'm thinking we flatten out in kindergarten. So I'm hoping, hoping the lowest we get is that 250 range now, instead of these huge drops we were seeing previously. So that, that takes care of about 79 kids of the big 165 difference. We had 47 more kids graduate that were in the kindergarten class. So right off the top, we lose 47. I had Casey look into it more and like, where are these other kids going? And the biggest thing that we saw there was, we had 91 kids that moved, not to like the Solon or Northwestern, they moved, they're gone, they're Green Bay, they're out of the state, they're gone. We can't compete with them. It's becoming more and more prevalent, the reason that we're running into issues is people don't have good jobs here. They don't have affordable housing. They can't move here. So we're having people move out, but nobody can afford to move back in. Even all these new housing complexes we get, these are, they're built for young couples that are, haven't started families yet. So that's the other thing we're running into is with the lack of industry in this city of Superior, we're not drawing people in. We're just kind of leaving them off. So that takes care of, that's overwhelming majority of that 165. The other part that always comes into play is the open enrollment. So open enrollment out this year was 201 compared to 182 last year. Again, we're, we're losing kids and that number sounds really bad, but I'll give you some of my data science stuff here shortly. But along with open enrollment out is open enrollment in. So last year we had 47 kids open enroll in, or no, we had 47 open enroll in this year. This year we had 47 open enroll in, 51 open enrolled in last year. So we lost, we lost four on the open side. A big chunk of that, at least one we've seen is we had six kids that graduated as open enrollment last year. Of the 201 that opened and rolled out, 98 went to brick and mortar. So they went to Solon and Northwestern. 103 went to online. When we look at online, we actually had a brief discussion about online schools last year. Is that something we should look into building? Should we make an online school? And I was actually, I came out of that gun hole and like, yeah, this is what we got to do. This is how we're going to save. So I reached out to my consultant down south who's been through this forever. I go, hey, we're going to look at doing an online school. Can you give me, what is some advice you can give? Well, I got one tip. That's all I can give. And he goes, don't do it. He goes, what are you going to do different than these schools that have been doing it for 15 years? Well, we're going to make one, the best one. We're going to make our kids learn. He goes, is that what all the open enroll kid or online kids want? Do they want a really difficult online course? Or do you want some of these other online courses out there which are frankly really easy? We're not going to educate kids at our minimum just to get them in and, you know, not have them set to succeed and graduate. And he said, what are you going to do different than these Hayward's, these schools that have been doing it forever that have it down to a science? And he was right. He was, you're going to have a huge investment into it. You're not going to get anything out of it. If you do, it's going to be taken from you down the road. So that was kind of, I, so although 98 kids that went brick and mortar, we had 83 that went to Maple, 15 that went to Solon. On the other hand, the open enrolled in, we had 27 kids come from Maple to us, 19 kids come from Solon and one kid from, from Northwestern. The numbers are skewed, right? There's a huge amount of kids going to Maple and not many coming back. You have to look at the size of us. If we have, you know, 4,000 kids and they have 1,300 kids, they have more to pick from. So that's, that's why there are differences. So I kind of went snooping on Maple. Maple did their budget hearing last week or two weeks ago. And part of it, they went over the open enrollment. So Superior, 201 kids go out. That's 5.12% of all of our students have opened and rolled out. Maple had 130 go out. So that number is like, well, look at it, Superior must be doing terrible because they have 71 more kids going out than Maple does. Maple has 11% of their kids open and rolling out compared to our 5%. We're doing all right. And then Solon, I couldn't get their online numbers. I could only look at what the kids that came to us. And they had 19 of the kids that came to us. Just those 19 kids represent 6% or 6.5% of all their students at Solon. Solon must not like us because that's going to cripple a small school district like that, taking 19 kids from them. One thing we did do is we brought back 17 kids that were virtual. So they came back into the Superior School District. And that's the big thing, like, when we look at the numbers and the percentage, we're not that bad on open enrollment. But every kid we lose, I take that personally. I think we all take that personally. We don't want to lose those kids. We're looking for ways to get those kids back. We started a survey a couple of years ago. We reached out to all the kids or the parents of the kids. Why are you leaving? We use that information to try and figure out how we can do stuff better. Unfortunately, a lot of those surveys don't come back. But one, they don't come back and two, some of them, some of the people that reply have a really bad opinion of us. Something happened that they have taken it super personal. So it doesn't give us gleam, a lot of information from it. But last year, I know we started, we reached out to every single kid that opened and rolled out or is online, you know, with a, they got a survey or a QR code so they could schedule a visit to us. They got a brochure saying, you know, this is what Superior is all about. And then a hand signed personal letter from Amy and the students would have been going to. I remember being in the meeting when they had to hand sign them. It was a lot of work. And I think we're starting to make a difference. We'd be testimonial from people that have come to us after being homeschooled or at a different school, understanding how much better it is. And so I think that's, we're taking baby steps in that direction, but we know that we need to continue to capture that. I wish I had better news on the enrollment side. I was conservative in our budgets when we did the numbers, so it didn't, it's not skewing off our finances that much, but it was, it, it did hurt. I just hope anticipate we're going to bounce back next year in four years, so.
So why, why is it that kids do online school? What are the reasons for online versus in person?
There's a really, really wide range. There are students or families that want that option because maybe the student has some mental health issues but can do okay in running in their home environment. Coming to school creates a lot of anxiety and so mental health concerns. Some people want that option to make doing sports in a larger area more accessible to them and their family has a little more freedom to do those things. Sometimes people have a negative experience with the school or a school district and they don't have an option to go, you know, to move districts or open and roll out, but they will, you know, at least do virtual. There are really wide range of options. I know an additional thing that we did with last summer, Sarah Vian, our digital learning coordinator, she does our online programming at the high school. And we'll speak to call one by one the families of our students that are virtual and said, you know, what are, what, what do you like about the virtual option that you're doing? You know, are you aware of our virtual option? And talked through that with them. And you think that there are a lot of middle school families that want a more robust or bigger virtual option. But that requires teachers and it requires equipment and it requires things that you have to think about it. Does that really offset the, would that really offset the money that you lose if they're not our students? So wide variety is my answer.
Okay. I'm just asking because, you know, students generally don't make the decision on whether they're going to, I mean, do online, right? It's a, it's a family, it's a parent. And if, from what I'm hearing, you say it's, it's not them considering like, oh, this is going to be an easier option for my student. Most parents aren't that way, right, with online learning? Like they're, they want maybe more of a challenge or just more freedom that it's going to allow.
There are also an additional reason that sometimes people choose an online option but not in a public school, online option, maybe through like a virtual academy, is when you are a virtual student in a public school setting, you're still, we're still required and accountable to that for the DPI for attendance, for state testing, like all of those pieces, Act 20 or the reading law. And so I do know that there are families, I have talked to families who don't want their child to be part of any of those things. So they want a virtual option that's not related to a public school. Like that is something that families have shared before.
But we're not looking, they're not looking at a watered down education, online education. It's not what they're looking for, right?
I would not say that is a common thing people say. I do think that there are families that sometimes they're playing a frustration, is that school? is that school is hard and challenging for their child and they want them to be successful. So are there easier courses that they could take in a virtual, in a virtual setting? That does come up with some families.
True.
I mean, it's hard to imagine any, any family would say, I want, you know, a less rigorous experience.
Sure, yeah. I, I'm asking because the reason that, you know, the guy told you is because students just want an easier option. And if, if that's not actually the reason students are looking for online education, um, then I don't know, it seems like it might be an option. If that's the reason that he's giving.
Well, that was one of the reasons. The big reason was how are you gonna be better, how are you gonna provide more and better than what all these other schools have been doing?
Sure, sure. But I'm saying if we continue down this path.
And this is.
And it's not something that parents are looking, like I said, for a watered down um online program. They're looking for more just different options. Then it might be something that we, and I know you've seriously considered it also, that we might have to relook at.
Well, we all know students learn differently. So some will thrive in the online community and some will not.
Sure, yeah.
Um, so you said some of the challenges. How about some of the um reasonings that people either come back to us or open and roll in? Anybody know some of those?
I know that we um have more EP dual enrollment offerings at our high school than other uh districts in our region on this side of the bridge. So, you know, if they, um, if they wanna stay in Wisconsin and come to a district where they get more EP dual enrollment, um, activities, I mean, we, you know, National Honor Society, Harvard Law, and some clubs and organizations that can give the kids experiences that sometimes smaller high schools don't have the option. Um, most of the significant number of students that are in other online schools in middle school not successfully come to us in ninth and tenth grade. Sometimes quite efficient, but we get a significant number of those from full virtual schools where the fam said this didn't work. We gotta come back to school. And then we have an opportunity to use our private recovery program or the things that we have in almost the whole community that we have back on track and coming to school.
You know, at the elementary level, like positive experiences and then word of mouth is something common that we hear from families. You know, I, I'm lukewarm about where my child is going, don't love the teacher right now or the experiences. But my nephew is having an amazing experience at an elementary school in your district. So I do know like that is something that comes up often with elementary parents. You know, they're not necessarily thinking ahead to EP offerings yet, but that comes up with elementary.
I think that's the most, that's the most impactful piece of the puzzle when people are unsure about a current situation is having a conversation where somebody that they know and trust says, we're, we're having this really great experience. Or I've not, you know, all my kids have gone through this whole school or school district and we've, you know, we're happy. I mean, that's where, when you don't have a relationship, it's, it's harder to trust the information. But if, if we're all having conversations with people that trust us and we've had, you know, good experiences, that's the most powerful um impact I've seen in people thinking about coming back if they've left or coming at all.
I would say in general, it is really challenging for public school districts to, without additional funding or increased funding from the state and federal level to try to keep up with all of these options and, you know, increased options that families want. Or it might even be best for some kids. You know, we, we are going to continue to be limited by what options we can explore because of funding. Having, having the virtual classes we do at that, like even now, we're, we're starting to expand. It requires, like everything else, having to make hard decisions about where you put your staff and your money.
Well, thanks for that part of the report, David.
One down.
Oh, it's, it's at the end.
Oh, it's at the end.
So another, we got two more discussion items. Um, actual transfer of service, equalization aid, equalization, equalized uh property valuation. And levy information will be updated on October fifteenth.
Yep. So State of Wisconsin doesn't give me any information I need until October fifteenth. So one thing you guys will see when you look at the revenue and expenditures, that number's gonna keep changing. It's changed throughout the years. The number that's up right now is what the number that will be even published in the newspaper here this week. Um, the big thing that, like the transfer of services isn't a big thing. It's the equalization aid that is gonna be the big number. And that's the number I've been telling everybody that we lost around two million dollars in the state of Wisconsin. Um, again, the big thing is we're getting fifty nine million dollars or whatever in revenue. That's what we got. That's what they were gonna give us last year too. So when everybody's property taxes go up and they come back and tell you, hey, I can't believe you're on the board. You let our taxes go up. You guys just must be swimming in money. You can tell them, well, actually we got forty four thousand dollars extra. You guys gotta pay an extra two million in the state base, two million plus. So, um, that's the big number that comes out to me. The equalized property valuation, we briefly talked, talked about one already. That number came out earlier. That was the weird thing where our value actually dipped one point some odd percent, which is crazy. It's gonna make us bad on the mill rate this year because it's that number for when it's due to tax up, but next year it's gonna help us some. On the aid side where we might find out on aid trip. So, and levy information, that'll be a part of um the October twenty seventh uh.
Budget hearing?
Budget hearing, yeah.
And the preliminary budget will be published fifteen days prior to the budget hearing on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Yep. So I'm gonna send you guys an email tomorrow with what is going to be in the paper on Saturday. Um, we have to get it into the paper by how early tomorrow morning. It's all done. Um, just as a preview, I think we're at fifty seven point nine million dollars in revenue. Um, which is a lot lower than what we had, especially compared to what we had um last year with our final numbers. And there's a lot of variables that play into that, but I will give you that information so you guys can look at it prior to giving it to the paper. If you have questions on it, just let me know. I'll try and walk you through. It's really high level. So, but yeah, if you have questions on it, just feel free to reach out.
So what's the good?
We got two informational items. The budget hearing is scheduled for Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five at five P M. And then fund ten revenue and expenditure preliminary reports. Is there good news in there?
Just the numbers way different.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't really use it for much. Um, you'll see the numbers of the revenue, like you're gonna see our budget number of revenues lower. But that's because we got less money in a lot, a lot of areas. At the same time, we're gonna pull our expenses down. We did do a nice bump into fund balance, which when the audit gets done, which will be done for this year. Um, we did contribute, we actually contribute a lot into fund balance, but there was a strategy behind that. So otherwise it's looking good. The good note, if you guys did not go to the homecoming parade, do it next year. It was amazing. That was able to get all the elementary kids there. Um, it was awesome. I was pulling a float, which was terrifying because kids were running and I'm pulling a trailer behind it. I wouldn't suggest when you get all those kids out there, it was absolutely, it was, it was amazing to see just thousands of kids just screaming for candy and stuff. I do have to say our teachers are amazing because I didn't see a single kid run out that was just one of our kids. I did see some daycare kids run out, which would be really harsh. But our teachers, they do what they, all those kids were tangled in and standing there with their banners and eggs waiting for the candy.
Thanks.
Very, very well. Thanks, Pat.
And then, no, can we get the middle school to the parade next year? Can we get the middle school to the parade next year?
Can I get some more buses?
Yes.
Well, maybe we, maybe the parade route will change because Amid will be back open.
You can make.
I agree. I feel like the middle school got left out.
I know. That's the second year in a row that I've had a lot of uh parents and students kind of disappointed that they messed out, but, I mean, they can walk.
And I can, I can say that there's a lot of students. Uh, it is a long walk away. Um, I've gotten a lot of really, really good feedback about being on Catlin, Rinkville University. Um, the control of, what is it, eight hundred, nine hundred students, two blocks from their building is a lot easier than one mile from their building. Um, so I know that's some of the things, but I know that we work with the middle school principals and we talk back and forth with them too and, um, yeah, it was amazing. Um, just look at it. Do a really good job. All expectations, just the teachers staying off the road, not in front of trailers.
It was excellent chaperoning that you and your husband.
Yeah. Oh, it was a good time. It was. If you've never been, you need to go.
I think we changed time, at least we tried to do that. There were, there were some major jobs we had to do as well. Middle schools can be.
I know, I know. I just, I just have to put a plug in for the kids because they were, they were disappointed. So I just have to, I have to say it out loud.
I believe that ends my report.
Well, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
This is now negotiations committee, Mr. Olson.
I got two items. Administration recommends approval of the October twenty twenty five new hires and separation sweep report.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Lori Larson, holy God. Yeah, she's been with us forever.
Yeah, thank you. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Administration recommends accepting the resignation and releasing Zachary Roth, high school teacher, health teacher from his twenty five, twenty six school year contract for his request effective October third, twenty twenty five with the liquidated damages provision enforced.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Long term, Matt, then?
We're not it, but that's our plan.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. And that's it. That's all I got, Steve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we're gonna move on to policy and rules.
We're gonna do that. Each one is individual.
Yeah.
Okay, I have three action items. Administration proposes the approval of changes to the following policies based on Neola recommendations in order to be in compliance with federal law updates. First reading of revised policy forty one twenty four, notice of reasonable assurance of employment. The language in this policy has been modified to be more consistent with state statute.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
First reading of revised policy fifty five twelve, use of tobacco and nicotine by students. The policy revision is for a more descriptive policy position to promote respect for Native American ceremonial tobacco usage.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Discussion.
And anything you want to add to this at all?
So ultimately, this would just be, um, make it a little more clear for our Native American committee and families when we get together for family events to be able to smudge. Right now, we've been going outside and the intent and the purpose behind smudging is really to be in the same space when you smudge. Uh, produces very limited amount of smoke. And so we, I met with the principals, I met with Steve. Um, we've kind of talked through logistics and come up with some, um, some guidelines to use kind of in-house uh in navigating this. We're gonna give it a go to see, see if there's things that need to be changed once we actually start practicing um based on the landing grounds. And, you know, uh, but we, but we test some things out. So we, everything passes here. So that's the intent behind it.
I know they have a policy at U W S as well for in the dorms, so connect with them if you haven't already.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
First reading of revised policy eighty three ninety five, student mental and physical health services. This policy is revised to reflect the provision of both mental and physical health services in school, both through school resources. Policy is also updated to better reflect the option for arrangements for onsite health services provided by outside agencies, either in person or virtually as supplementary to services provided by school staff.
Motion to approve.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I have no informational items and no discussion items. That ends my report.
Thank you. Um, just a reminder, then our next meeting, the regular meeting will be next Monday, October thirteenth. And then the budget hearing, which also acts as our committee of the whole meeting for November, will be Monday, the twenty seventh of October. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, second.
Motion in the second. You're staying. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
See you in a week. See you in a week. See you in a week.